The United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Call for the Exeter Town Council Regular League for April 30, 2024.
Dan Patterson.
Yeah.
Michael Fay.
Yeah.
Diane Allen.
Yes.
Olivia D. Francesca.
Here.
And Cal.
Here.
Okay, knowledge with announcements, presidential preference primary, April 2nd, 2024. Voting will be held at the usual home location, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Item B, annual dog licensing, April 1st through June 1st is $6. After June 1st, a $6 per license plus a $25 late fee per license. The town clerk's office, animal shelter, more online, for more information, visit the town's website. Item C, Exeter West Greenwich School District, all-day referendum, Monday, April 8, 2024. 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, council chambers at the Exeter Town Clerk's Office, 675 Tenod Road, Exeter, Rhode Island. Item B, Exeter Fire District Annual Budget Meeting is Wednesday, May 8th, 2024. At 7:00 PM at the Exeter West Greenwich Junior Senior High School Auditorium, 9:30 Deuce Neck Hill Road, West Greenwich, Rhode Island. Item E, Financial Town Meeting is Monday, or Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Exeter West Greenwich Junior Senior High School Auditorium, 9:30 Deuce Neck Hill Road, West Greenwich, Rhode Island. Cal, you said you had another thing?
Uh, I do, thank you, Dan. As liaison to the Emergency Management Department, I have this notice that I'd like to share with the public. The Emergency Management Director wishes to inform residents that have been impacted by the January 9th through 13th, 2024 federally declared disaster, that FEMA assistance will soon be available locally. Details regarding date, time, and location for applying in the town will be forthcoming.
Yeah.
And furthermore, FEMA response teams are actively surveying affected neighborhoods in Exeter. All Exeter personnel, including the town constable, have been briefed on the identities of FEMA representatives and the vehicles that they will be using. These representatives will be accessible to provide residential aid until May 20th, 2024. For further inquiries or assistance, please reach out to the EMA Director via email or cell phone. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda order, anybody need to pull anything out?
I, no.
Motion to approve the agenda order. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda, let's see.
Reynolds would have one.
Communications, Cal?
Six, seven, and fifteen.
Olivia?
I'm all set, thank you, but I need to pull the meeting minutes for the 18th.
Okay, separate vote on that one, okay. Diane, you have any?
Yes, four. Cal's on six.
Just four. Right, did you have any?
Sixteen or so.
Oh, sixteen?
Sixteen, I think that's almost the same as four. Four and sixteen? Yeah.
Okay, you have any, Mike?
Negative.
Okay, I'm going to call number 22. Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the town council's special meeting March 8th. Olivia doesn't hear that day.
So, second, move on second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we need to, to second, Olivia, all in favor?
Uh, I move that we, I'm sorry, well, Dan, I move that we approve the special meeting minutes of March 18th.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, gee, kennel license renewed. Do I have to read them all then?
I think that was part of the consent agenda.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, went right over it.
Yeah, we're all set.
Number six, vacancies and appointments, personnel board. Conservation Commission?
Dan, I would just speak to that if I could.
All right, ahead, Cal.
Council will remember that at our public hearing on the town plan, there were slips of paper left on the tables asking if there were residents who were interested in participating in any way or being involved. So I took time to renew those, a review rather, I'm not sure if anybody else has had a chance, but I, I reviewed those, those papers that were returned with indication of interest in serving. And I found from reviewing those papers, that there are seven people who indicated that they would like to serve on the Conservation Commission. I'm going to read the names and then I have a motion that I'd like to make if it's seconded, we'll discuss. These are the seven names, Sheila Reynolds, Caleb Jaffe, Jennifer Craigan, Mary Brown, Crystal Leonard, Katrina Thornley, and Chris Bacon. I recall we had other letters that had been sent previously, but these, these people were present, indicated to us a willingness, so this is my motion. I, I am going to ask Lynn to contact these people, indicate to them that the council's prepared to appoint them at the main meeting if they wish to be appointed. If they withdraw their name from consideration, then Lynn will report that back to us. That's my motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Under discussion, I would just ask Lynn to also, I think there's two or three people that wrote letters before. Also maybe reach out to them and see if they're interested. And see how many names we come up with.
Okay, is there actually one? All in favor?
Aye.
B, resignations, Vincent Well, mechanical plumbing inspector. After he retrieved, we have to cut out date last month. That came under his service, would, they promote accept his resignation.
I'd make the motion to accept his resignation with regret.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to post for the vacancy for a mechanical plumbing inspector?
It's already posted.
Did you already post it?
Yeah, we gave him permission to post it.
Okay, great, okay, we don't need to do that.
But we haven't received any.
Haven't received anything. Okay. Let's see, C, appointments, Exeter Rural Land Preservation Trust Committee members. Two, to serve four-year term, beginning date of appointment. Juvenile hearing board, alternate member to serve unexpired term ending November 6th, 2026. Board of Campusers, full member to serve six-year term, beginning date of appointment. I think you have.
Okay, yes, we got a letter from Ted Natale, so, and I talked to Mary B. And she wanted effective people for the day after the election. So I'll make a motion to appoint Ted Natale to serve on the Board of Campusers. Second, effective April 3rd.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four, tax board review, full member to serve three-year term, beginning date of appointment.
We, we did have a letter from Ted indicating he'd like to move up to that position.
Yeah, he did have a current member.
He's an alternate member.
From his alternate position, he's currently, you're right, but there's need for an alternate in case one of those three has to recuse themselves from consideration. So he has asked us, you might recall, we received that communication. He's asked to be considered as a full voting member as opposed to an alternate. So I would move that we move him to that position.
Is that a motion?
I said, I thought I said I.
Okay, all right, I'll second that.
Thank you, I'm trying.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to post for a alternate member from the tax board review.
Did you direct Lynn to post?
He just made a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Because you're going to need that with the revows going out last week. Excellent, number five, mechanical plumbing inspector is already posted. Item D, expiring terms, Al Gestopson, Constable, term expiring, April 1st, 2024. I believe we did have a letter from him?
Yes, and, and Scoot's recommendation.
Okay. I'll make a motion to appoint Al Gestopson, Constable, for a term expiring April 1st, 2024.
Twenty-five.
You get twenty-four.
It's term expiring now, but it's going. Another year.
I'll second your motion, Dan.
Does it matter, Jim, that this is not under the appointments? It's just under an expiring term?
It's a mistake.
Reappointment, Jim?
Yeah, it's a reappointment. I mean, if you want to be technically correct, you probably should.
Last month's agenda, because I think you've got a payment too late to be.
Yeah, he was, um, he was not on the list last month. Because we thought we had three, but we had four.
Well, could I, could I suggest we appoint him pending next, temporarily, and then reconsider it under appointments next month?
Sure.
I think Scoot might, might need him for, for work that needs to be done, so.
Well, aren't these positions, you serve until you're replaced?
Usually, yeah, that's how you're sworn in, so, and it doesn't make much difference to be still there.
Yeah, it's just a question of it didn't appear under requirement, so.
Probably should have been the C as well, but, yeah, I think you're right, I think you're both right. Type of truth, but I think he's, he serves until he's reappointed, or until, until someone fills the vacancy. The statute does say that it's a year appointment, so out of abundance of caution, I think that's a suggestion.
Oh, so next month? Reject, reject.
Dan, Dan, you don't want, you don't want to consider it tonight, so Scoot goes without anyone from?
We don't want that to happen, yeah.
No, he serves.
I said, I thought you said you're suggesting.
Oh, but now you've, you know, you've concluded that he's going to stay anyway, so he'll stay.
Because he has to stay until someone places.
Even though his appointment expired, that's okay.
It'll be, it'll be properly listed.
Perfectly acceptable. Lynn will, Lynn will know, I'm sure, it's good.
No, I don't, I pulled my motion, so, okay, okay. Uh, the next, I have a public hearings, I'm going to recuse myself for item A. You got a form for me, Lynn?
No. Public hearings, 7A, firearms dealers license application, William Worthy and Andre Mendez, applicants of the range, Inc., 560 South County Trail, Exeter, Rhode Island, lot 72 slash block 2, lot 10. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like to invite the, the applicant, Bill Worthy and/or Andrew Mendez.
Andre. Yes, Andre. Thank you, Council, for allowing us to come here tonight. We're looking at taking over a unit that is already existing right now as a range. The previous tenant already moved out, but all of the equipment is still in place. So we would just basically be moving in and continuing the business as previously. We currently have a location in northern Rhode Island right now in Gloucester, where we're just a retailer. We tried to put a range up there, but it's a lot of land and a lot of water, so when this opportunity came up, we reached out to Gashi and thought it would be a, it would be a good fit for the community.
You guys are cool, is.
Correct, yes.
I've read a lot of good things about Big Bear.
We do a lot for the community.
The owners for the last 20 years or what?
No, no, we bought it off them seven years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we took it over. Right now, we have a good relationship with our town. We do a lot for the community, outreach programs, we work with Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. We raise money for the food pantry in Gloucester, we try to get back to the community.
And, and the reason, this is a bit tongue-in-cheek.
It's okay.
The reason that you don't have a range in Gloucester is due to the age. I, it's a bit tongue-in-cheek.
Yes, well, yeah, cost is pretty primitive as well.
Plus you have something here that you can.
It's already built.
It's already built, correct.
And we didn't just look at Gloucester, we looked at Smithfield, most of Smithfield.
That's right.
And you guys would be doing the same hours and just this, like the exact same type of.
It is, yes.
Exactly, like, basically what was there, like, I know you said the building is there, the range is there, but sales and all that other stuff.
And training, too. Training is a huge issue. Yeah, education is always a big pillar of the business that we run now, and it's going to continue to this business as well.
You can come to the new community center and do gun safety.
We would love to do that, Stan.
Our instructors actually educate, our Gloucester PD, Smithfield PD, Situate PD, Foster PD. We've gone and done active shooting in the, in the schools during, when they take a break. There's a lot of money that's out there, art funds to do education. Our guys go in there, we bring in rescues and have everybody basically on site. And we figure out how long it takes for them to get actually to the school, so they would just have to wait on site until something, you know, until they said, okay, you're actually here now, then you can go in. So we, our, our shop up in Gloucester is more of a, an outfitter for the hunting, fishing guy. They come into our shop, this is going to be strictly educational, firearm sales, and training.
Yeah, Smithfield PD did a community outreach, I want to see, two years ago now? And they approached us to get us involved, you know, and, and we helped them with.
Safe.
Storage stuff and, you know, our instructors went out and were available for the public to come and show them how to do stuff, how to do safe fire and stuff like that, so. Yeah, I mean, if you have any of those opportunities for us to get involved in, we would love to do that stuff, for sure.
And even outside of firearms training, we do like stop-the-bleed classes, where we have a lot of moms who travel with their kids to hockey, baseball, whatever, and if you're on the highway, there's an accident, you can offer some kind of first response. We have a very strong relationship with the police department, even the state police in the state. The state police actually, out of their, their Lincoln, not a Lincoln office, their Situate office.
Situate, yeah.
Actually went to Six Hour, which is firearm manufacturer, and asked that we be the distributor for those firearms for the state police, so. We've had a long-term relationship with all of the different municipalities in the area. And we would like to continue that down here.
Anybody else?
One quick question, are you aware of any issues there where you wish to locate that might have forced that previous owner or tenant to leave? Do you know of any issues?
We, we filed with, we, so, a couple of things we weren't able to give your amazing clerk here information, because we had to wait on the FFL, which is a firearms license that you get, which is a federal firearms license. You're going to have that, and we're close to getting that, and that will, we spoke about having a couple of things before we opened, obviously. But as far as the ATF and even some of the agencies that we know, there was nothing wrong or previously done. It was like financial stuff where that wasn't, that person. But we have a very large social media following, because of all of our educational classes. We are going to be one of the five best spots in the round for, for training, so we hope that the relationships that we've made over the seven years up in Gloucester, a lot of our customers actually are from Exeter that tribe up to us, so.
I'm sorry, one of the what best spots?
Best training, training education, so. So nobody gave me any kind of, like, whoa, I want to go to that place, or, I mean, we're planning on spending quite a lot of money moving into town, so we wouldn't be doing that if, if we heard that there was something that would make it weird.
Yeah, so $270 is owed in advertising fees.
Okay.
And yes, we need the license he spoke of, and town sergeant will have to do a walk through before you, we can issue the license.
When is your projected open date, or when do you want to open?
Tomorrow, but, but when the previous tenant moved out, they took basically all of the furnishings out. So we plan on kind of making it almost Cabella-esque inside, so the furniture's going to take a few months to, to, you know, to get created to move in. We also have to order all the info, we're waiting, we had to wait for this night to finalize our SBA loan, so that way we can bring in the income, because some of the, some of the equipment in the lanes just is a little bit older, like, it's like old style where you push the button and the thing goes out on a trolley. Ours is going to be a touch panel display where it actually, there are training simulations that you can do with the new software we're bringing in. So if you buy a target that has all sorts of stuff on it, like it'll twist, turn, based on where you are, so you don't have to send a retriever back and forth, because there'll be a camera on it, so you can see how you're shooting without. So it's all the newest.
She just wants a date.
Yeah, probably.
I, I like all the details, but.
We're excited. It was originally June 1st, it's looking a little bit more towards July at this point, yeah.
Plenty of time to get the.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have one other person to speak, Sasha, Ace Davis?
Ace Davis, 146 Beechwood Hill Trail, we see applicants well and success with the operation. They may have chosen a tough road. It's hard to compete against others who skirt the rules and regulations. This isn't the first time somebody's tried to compete with Patterson and Chambry Arms, or his gift shop for that matter. The others are all gone. A business operating in a residential zone has an unfair economic advantage over commercially zoned businesses. I hope it's not too much of a disadvantage for it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dan? I'd like to clear up some of this, the fables that keep coming out. And I'll have the town treasurer answer the question, what is the tax rate for commercial piece of land per thousand?
It's, the tax rate is no different than residential.
So commercial and residential, the tax rate is the same per thousand dollars? Okay, that's all I have to say.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I'd like to respond to that.
And I'd like to, I don't know what protocol is, you spoke.
Something, something to share is the way I want to speak.
So my understanding is that the specially used permit that Chambry Arms has is for a farm standard, is not for firearms sales. That means there is an advantage, because that business is operating without the proper permit. There is a permit expense that goes with that permit.
You good?
I'm good, all right.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a call of vote to approve the firearms dealers license application with William Worthy and Andre Mendez, applicants to the range, Inc., 560 South County Trail, Exeter, Rhode Island, lot 72, block 2, lot 10.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Look, congratulations, thank you very much.
Okay, appreciate it, bye.
Okay, public hearing, B, public entertainment license application, Robert Burns, applicant. On behalf of Southern New England Truck Pull Association, the whole truck and garden tractor pulls with two vendors from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM on the northern portion of town home Reynolds Field, located on South Road, Exeter, Rhode Island, on Saturday, May 18th, 2024, rain date, Sunday, May 19th, 2024. Saturday, June 22nd, 2024, rain date, Sunday, June 23rd, 2024. Saturday, July 27th, 2024, rain date, Sunday, July 28th, 2024. Saturday, September 14th, 2024, rain date, Sunday, September 15th, 2024. And Saturday, October 12th, 2024, rain date, Sunday, October 13th, 2024. Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before, Bob, before I have you speak, because we're in the middle of doing a DDM compliance on that, what's your schedule going to be? Because we've got to move that parking lot.
Right.
And a track out of.
I feel like, it's going to be right down to the wire, but I feel that their whole course could probably stay, because that's the very last section of the work that I'll be doing, the way I'm planning it out.
Because I'm thinking it's, it's probably like that September, October dates where it's going to be.
Right. It'll be close, like I said, I think the date is October something. Going to do the best I can to complete the job, you know it's a task of, it's a very hot task in itself with the duties that I have to do anyways. So I'm, I'm thinking that that deadline might be, I'm hard pressed to hit that deadline anyways.
Yeah.
Overall, they didn't give me much time.
Depends on the rain again. What's that? Depends on the rain again.
Right, yeah, it's exactly right, so, but, so I was hoping that I could do that section last and let them have their season, because it's important for the community. And then it's just that one section where the bigger track is, because the line is straight with that track now.
Yeah.
So we'd only have to, I could do right up to it.
Yeah.
And then finish.
Okay.
The following week after that, I mean, it's, weather committing, at this time, I can't predict the weather. And that is, when you're dealing with the moons and things like that, you find out there's a lot of mud.
Yeah, okay, all right, sorry, Bob, come on up.
Well, I'm Bob McConville, president of the club. I've been talking to Rob, if we should miss one or two, it is what it is. We've offered to help him out in any way, shape, or form. We give to the food bank every year. I myself get there at 6 o'clock in the morning, and we tell everybody, do not start the motors from 9:00. We also announced, I hate to say it, but every poll is usually won, it's getting better, somebody, like, peel, not peels out there, but gets their motor, and I understand the neighbors. So we, we kind of tackle that too, to make sure nobody starts their motors. They've already been warned this year, if anybody leaves that parking lot, they don't spin tires, they just like to, everybody thinks they got hot rods, usually the spectators that come, it's not the polls. But they've been warned that if we get their license plate, they'll be banned for the year. I'm not putting up with it. It's a common courtesy, you're doing us a favor, we do you a favor.
Thank you.
And other than that, that's it, but we'll work with you, whatever you need, we appreciate it. I know, and Joel Howard's over there. Rob's given us a couple of rules and regulations, if you want to move a tree or something down, contact him first.
None of that.
Where people thought they had the authority or were trying to do a good thing, move stuff around, they all went, oh, you don't do it. Excuse the word, damn thing there, I'll check on what you missed, Mr. Shatner. Not, not even tree removal, you see a tree in the middle yard, leave it there, talk to dark end, that's it. And over the years, we've tried to put a burma, but sometimes in excess of raining drains, but we've always been denied. We've always tried to improve, but now you're on top of it, so.
Well, you know, a question about, I noted, I noted a change of address here on our app, does that, was that done? For, what did that mean? It said, what did it say, 442, now it says 388, is that online? Does it say that on the list as well? So I wasn't sure what the, do you know what that means?
No, no.
Same location, same, come in the same game, everyone.
We, we had a couple of items added here, I think after it was originally completed. There's a reference here to nine, I think it says 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM as food vendors.
They usually show up about nine to 10:00 and they state about two to three. We limited like two trucks, or two vendors.
Well, I, that was just an add-on to the original, which, and also the other add-on is a, mentions a garden tractor and trucks. That was to clarify what you were doing. And the other question that I have, obviously Mr. Davis wishes to speak, but I'd like to speak first if I could. A question is, you said you've spoken to Rob. One of the work that's being done there in compliance with the DDM directives, after that is completed, does that, does that not allow you to use that site in the future? I'm just curious. Cause I remember years ago when it was, had another use. And I know looking at, from some South Road, looking to see what we see from the road, it's very neat and clean, which I know years ago Truck Force created that space.
We also, not to interrupt you, we also pick up all the trash and we mow the grass every two weeks. That costs us like $3,000 a year to mow it, keep it nice, and we do everything. Whether it's the ball field or what they're doing lacrosse now, as long as we don't get no complaints, we'll keep mowing it all.
Well, so back to my question, will you be able to make any use of it once the, the work that's being required has been done? Do you, do you know, or Rob, do you know?
Yes, I do.
Do you understand my question?
Yeah, I do. And I have every intention on keeping that active. I think it's a wonderful thing for the community. There's not a lot of things going around. The way that we set up with DDM, the borders of the zone, the MS4 zone and all that, we have straight lines that we can work, but we're just simply gonna move the big track where the little track is. And then the little track will go just to the left of that. Or we even have a section along the driveway, we could do that. So I'm not done with the planning of it. We've gotta kind of see how it, you know, I don't have, I didn't have the time to stake it out and look at it at this time. But we believe there's plenty of room to accomplish exactly what they have going on there and maybe even improve it a little better.
We used to park up in the back years ago. We haven't touched that area just because we haven't had to. We've, we've talked to them, told them, whatever we need to do, we need to park up in the middle behind.
No, we're gonna have a new parking lot. That's all part of the plan that we, we agree with DM. So there'd be a new parking area along with the grass area that they mow too. So there'll be that addition. They have access to that gate where the normal residents will have access only to the new parking area. So I mean, I think it's gonna be wonderful. I think it's wonderful. I'm looking forward to taking my child to that event. And as a resident myself, I think it's great to have something like that in our community. That's my two cents for the whole thing.
Well, I also, because you're improving, changing the site, modifying the site, I mean, I think a lot of us have thought that it's also an ideal spot for some other kinds of community activities from time to time.
They do lacrosse there now.
Could be, perhaps.
You got car shows there? I know we have car shows at the animal rescue, but like move them, whatever. We plan, if everything goes right and we get permission down the road, we buy three or four little grandstands. Little, it's not like usual, you see, just.
Little what?
Grandstands or seating areas. Right now, they sit on the swim blocks and they drink a cheer. If we can put three or four with the town's permission, Rob's permission, just to bring more family atmosphere. Right now, no kids are allowed by the track, on the track. They're only kept behind in a certain area. It's all off safety.
Thanks.
No problem.
Ace, huh? So I was just gonna point out, I think the address change is probably because Pat Whitford, the 911 Coordinator, has been cleaning up a lot of the addresses in town. The property has multiple driveways, multiple driveways are supposed to get multiple 911 addresses.
So I didn't hear, you're working with Pat to make some change? I'm sorry. Well, I didn't hear what you said. Could you repeat it, please?
The address change is probably because Pat Whitford, the 911 Coordinator, is cleaning up a lot of the zero addresses in town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the audience?
$196,066 is owed in advertising and we need your certificate of insurance for the trucks and tractors.
196.
66. 196, 66. And certificate of insurance for both tractors and trucks.
You talked to Bobby Burns, right?
Huh?
You've talked to Bob Burns the first time? Yeah, he'll bring you a check, he's the Treasurer, he'll bring you a check in. There's a chance of more trouble.
Okay.
And other questions? Okay, motion to close the public hearing?
So who?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna make a motion and what I'm gonna do, I'll make a motion to approve the Southern Rhode Island Truck Force Association, proposed dates in May, June, July. Those will be set in stone, September and October. We're gonna have to play it by ear, Bob, see how we're going. Because like I said, you have to put it on the time schedule. To approve it, approve it for those dates and we'll work with the group for the September, October.
So is he gonna have to come back?
It, it, see what happens, because what happened over there in the hall when we were doing the work, it kept raining and just, it just killed us. It, so there's a little bit left in that one corner on that side. This side is phased too, so, but, so that's my motion.
Well, I propose it in a minute, then.
Okay.
Approving the additional dates pending the availability or subject to the availability of the site.
That'll work.
And if we can't have them, I'll make sure the club, everybody goes and is publicized and everything else.
I mean, you guys have been talking back and forth, so, but, okay.
I don't know if I should bring up Rob, but the gate, we left the gate open last year, something happened in there. The gate's been locked. There's only like three people, I have a key, including myself, so.
Okay.
That's my address. So if any problems that comes up, Mr. Shapp, he wants me to know and we address it.
Okay, I'll second your opinion.
Thank you.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, number eight is public comment.
Ace Davis?
Public comment, fourth.
Ace Davis, 146 Beechwood Hill Trail. On the subject, I think it's time to reissue that RFP for the DDM remediation plans. We need to get it right this time because if we blow another year, that stuff gets allocated to other customers. We lose another growing season. Unpleasant as the topic might be to think about, the plants and trees need to be ordered now in the next couple of weeks. On the legal costs, I'm surprised there's no exact legal session on the agenda, given the town's Supreme Court emergency motion and nine others has passed, Mark. Three billers and, three lawyers are now billing the town on this. Marusak, Cycple, and now a new guy, Ken Sylvia, from the same firm. Based on last month's hearing, he's learning from the first two, but maybe their own lessons. Remember Marusak's claims about the salt shed and Cycple's about the dozen cases? Sylvia claimed three times, I bulldozed from a state drive to my land in that hearing. For the record, this is what a bulldozer looks like. I've never owned one, I've never rented one for use in my land on from a state drive and no one else has for me as long as I've owned it. I'll add that to my next affidavit. You solemnly swear that in the exercise of the office of attorney and counselor, you will do no falsehood nor consent to any being done. That's the very first line of the legal oath in Rhode Island. Then Marusak, Cycple, and Sylvia all take this oath. These are your legal reps. Incidentally, on the notice sheet, I only have one lawyer on this. The Dozer Pick is from the CN Woods website. That's the Ripwood member Matt Scheck's dear town business to. His buddy Ripwood, Officer Lettergar, got those commissions and they went on those trips together. The town paid for those trips. We were supposed to get reimbursed, but somehow towards the end of his time here, the reimbursement checks to the town stopped. On West Shore Drive, the Reverset and Woodin wants, that's your opinion regarding the roads. In response, it's more than that. My responses and my comments come from this book, which is Byron Elliott's Treatise on the Law of Roads and Streets. It's old, but it's brilliant. He's a general in the Civil War, 12 years on the Indiana Supreme Court. Our state definition of a road from side to side and end to end comes from this book, page 478. I was surprised to see Marusak's admission saying a state ends at the inside line. Maybe he missed that part. Pages 477, 485, and 486, blocking a road even in the end is a public nuisance, no matter who does it. Property installment in the right of way can't be removed by the town unless it impedes the travelway. Hundreds of examples, dozens of cases, not all from Rhode Island, some are. I think the current Marusak and Shappi position regarding West Shore Drive puts the town on weak legal ground. Thank you.
Okay, number nine, new business correction to Reynolds' chair of trust meeting, member Nancy Anderson's term expiration date to bring committee members' term expiration dates into compliance with Town and Exeter Code Of Order, this is section 2-224.
Yeah, so like I said, it's been brought to my attention that the ordinance requires three groups, members to expire in three different years. And to adjust that, Nancy Anderson has agreed to extend her term one year. So you would have to vote to extend her year to April 2025. And that would bring it into three groups, members, you know, member.
I, I move that we adjust Nancy Anderson's term accordingly in compliance, to comply with the, the ordinance, it could be charter, because it might be a charter, whatever it is.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, request of North Kingston to share cost of resurfacing narrow lane. That's you, Rob?
Yep. We do share, have the lanes with North Kingston. I met out, met them out there. It's on my, it's on my capital improvement plan for the three years. This is my second year of that. And so I have the funds to do a double chip seal and MRT, which is they call penetrating oil. They agreed, and as long as it's all right with this council to give us half the money to do that road.
They don't give us half the money? They don't give us half the money?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they wanna split it and then they, they'll put, they have a line item in their budget for line striping. Cause I told them that, you know, if I accomplish everything, I'd go back and line stripe. Cause wanna do that probably all over town, here and there, but everything hinges on, if you guys want it, and they want me to give all my bid requests and the RFPs that brought me to those services that I'm planning on doing on that road.
Okay. So you need a motion from us to agree to work with North Kingston and share the cost of this road?
Yes.
Something that affects?
Yes.
Using the double chip seal?
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's, it's beyond, it needs a lot of help, it's.
Well, cause you were telling me North Kingston likes to do inch and a half to the Joe Leys everywhere.
Well, that's what I was told and after the conversations, it's really East Greenwich that likes to do that. North Kingston, all they, NK just wanted to do the MRT alone. That's what their plan was this year. And I think it's, that's the start.
Very end of that's in East Greenwich, right?
It is, yep. And from what I found out with East Greenwich, they're paving it right up to our section. So we can't, neither one of us can afford to pave it. We have worse projects. I'd rather do some paving on gravel roads than all we do. And so that's a long story, but, so the whole road, the entire road will be, you know, done.
And this is a road that's already, did we?
It's, it is on my capital improvements. And what I did is I, I did it, the whole square yardage of, of the, the entire section, even though like you go down the middle of the road, one side's exit, the other side's North Kingston. I wanted to get it for our residents back to a place where we could save it before it's completely ruined. And that's about, you know, three, four more years, it's done. I mean, really, it's that bad.
But this is, this is a situation where it's on your list, it's on the capital improvements, and now it's just gonna cost us half as much.
Yep.
Because of North Kingston.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I would think maybe, Dan, we, we might proceed by suggesting that the town Bill, once the work's done, that we build town in North Kingston for one half of the cost of that project.
Right, so I just had my first meeting with them on site just last week. And so I told them I had this meeting, I was gonna present it to you. I wa, I was, I was gonna give them options whether, if they wanted to pave, because I was under the impression they wanted to pave, I was saying, take the money that we have for pavement, which I believe is a better process. But none of us can really afford that, but this is at least saving the base until late, you know, this'll get us 10 years down the road where maybe there'll be enough time.
I was just gonna ask you, how long will this last?
Eight to 10 years, especially with the double on there. So that'll buy us a lot of time to hopefully get some money and maybe we can split the cost on paving it.
Yeah.
Putting all the labor over it.
Okay. Uh, let's see, make a motion to direct the Director of Public Works to work with North Kingston in pursuing the shared cost of resurfacing narrow lane.
Thank you.
Okay. Half, or should we say 50%? You specify maybe?
Okay.
That's their understanding and mine, so.
Well, it's a motion, we'll make it, 50% rather than sharing, it's still no specific.
Okay. To pay 50%?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up, C, Request to Go Out to Bid, Exeter Clerk's Office, New Roof. Got that, thank you.
Hope you want to approve a bid, Walter.
I'll make a motion to go out to bid for the move for the clerk's office.
Second?
Just a question, how much, what is that? I've forgotten, what, what is this gonna, how much?
The entire roof.
The whole? Everything, the whole complex, if you will, kind of.
Overload.
All, all of the whole, everything.
Yep.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, Request to Go Out to Bid, Exeter Clerk's Office, Basement Water Issue.
I'll make a motion that we go out to bid for the clerk's office basement water issues. Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item B, 2004, 2025 Budget Development.
Oh, I did. Oh, I'm sorry, Dan. Sorry, Ken. Well, at the end of, as the week went on, and I thought, wait a minute, we're gonna be sure that tonight we talk, and I knew you were gonna present us with something, but I'm worried that our agenda, our protocol for agendas need to be, we need to be able to discuss it, if it wasn't on the agenda. I was just a little concerned about that. But when we used to do your reports, you always provided us with all the updates, but we're not doing records anymore. So that's my, was, that was my rationale, counsel, for making sure that was here so that we could in fact address it, which Ken obviously has every intention of doing. And Maria.
And Maria.
So that's why I put it on there, the way I did. Okay?
Well, I've been working with the departments and they've been handing in their budgets as they would like to see them go. May not be much of a surprise, but almost every department is asking for increases because of the just increase in material and costs and labor and the demands. So, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of discussion during budget time. It's gonna be a strain on the budget for sure. Overall.
Well, I'd like to say something. I, I would like to be sure, you know, we always speak to Rob, and we wanna speak to you. And I think we should speak to Bill as our planner in the Planning Department.
Dory has some special requests, Lynn has some issues we need to talk about.
So we need to ask these people, you know, to come, to come in. And I just felt we ought to talk about it tonight because it's April. And then. And I just felt we ought to talk about it tonight, because it's April, and then May is coming. And that's only, what, ten days or something before a public hearing? So I'd just like to make, you know, I'd like to see the plan.
Some of the bigger numbers, like Blue Cross, they're coming in a little bit high. I've been going back and forth with them to try to get that as down as possible as we can get it. So there's definitely some
We don't have the trust numbers, do we?
We don't have the trust numbers yet, which is gonna be because of the addition.
Well, what I'd like to say for anybody who's the audience of four, but also for anyone who's listening, I mean, this is what Maria has been doing in recent years, which in years prior to Maria, I begged for this to happen. And Maria goes to line by line to assess where it's possible to make some cuts. And not really, you know, just reduce numbers for our final budget tally. And I appreciate that, I think we all do, because I remember when that didn't happen. And we need, we need you to do that, as you are, correct?
Yes, I can't work magic.
No, but you, no, I understand, but you're looking at each line.
Of course, and, you know, the fact that we don't have any debt right now is helpful. And so, I mean, we're pretty neat, we run pretty neat, we have
Well, and the audits each year show us that, too. I mean, we're not far off. And, and still, when we work with these figures, we still have nearly a quarter of the year, almost a quarter, that
That's still happening.
Is still not sure, you know, what's gonna happen. I mean, what the expenses may be, that we don't know, but we must have saved a little money on plowing. Wait, it hasn't snowed, Rod.
No, the ice is
Oh, the ice, yeah, I know, you've had to treat roads, but, I know.
It's harder to do that, believe it or not. I'd rather have snow to push, and then the road's black, and I go home, and it don't work anyway. Then long rains, long hours, so
Okay, sorry, I brought that up. Well, corrected me immediately, and my assumptions at work are
I wish it was the case, but it's not.
It's okay. We know you don't ask them to go out when they don't need to.
That's right.
I know that.
Can I get some dates?
Ken, you wanna?
I've sent out the calendar in an easier format, I think, than having six pages of a month. So, thank you for responding. And I will schedule the meetings with the departments based on the availability of the GALLA council, hopefully all of them, pretty important ones. Here, the one thing I want to pass it, here's just the timeline for the budget prep. We're right on time, same as last, we have ten weeks. I think we started this week, when we have two meetings this year.
Why not?
It's really for Maria. When she's ready to have the first meeting.
I'm ready.
Maria's ready, she said.
There you are.
So we start next week, I guess. I'll take everybody's
Don't want the next, the first meeting next week, so
Yeah, I have three, five calendars so far, so
All right, can't keep us posted. Next up, increased community notification awareness, I believe that you counted?
Well, that was, you know, the issue that I asked, I think, Ken, that's, no, I, I Well, it's under unfinished business later, under that Go, Go Gov mobile act. That was what I asked Ken to do research on, but that's an item that anybody should, we all should address, about increased notification and awareness. Only because everybody keeps telling us that
Nobody knows what's going on.
But nobody's here, so
Because nobody knows what's going on.
I don't know, is that truly true?
Well, so, I, I had, I had a call
People don't know they're held, Mike, they really don't.
But, you know
Well, that's what this is about.
Just let me share just a little bit. I had a call this afternoon for a resident, spent here for a long time, and actually used to be a frequent attendant at meetings. And the person said, what are we voting, what are they voting for? You know, so what I mean is, they, some people don't, not only don't know what's happening here, but that there's a presidential primary, and we know it didn't make a lot of difference, if any difference at all. But remember that the, I guess, one of the most frequent remarks from people commented on the con-plan was that they need to, there needs to be, or should be, better means of communication. So, I don't know that it's here, oh, there's, no, there's nothing here about the website, but in my opinion, and, but I don't use it, because I don't need it, because I have what I need. I get it from you people. But other people say that it's somewhat difficult to maneuver, and that there could be additions to the website for better communication. And if you remember at our last meeting, no, but you, you were, you were not here the last time you met here. And I turned to Ken, can you remember what he said? Do you want to say?
Well, I just followed along. You said, it was in the draft form, the website.
Now?
Huh?
Now? It's a draft form? No. I said when it was drafted.
Yeah. But it is, to me, it's still drafted, it was just a, it's like a template that was put on there and filled in with color and stuff. And it's really, you know, there's no evaluation of how it works and user friendliness and
Because it's not user friendly.
Well, wait, what did you just say?
I said it's not user friendly. But we already know this, and it's just about
So now it's a question of, can we add money to the, Ken, I mean, we're really, no, we can't add any money. But my point is that this is something that I feel people have spoken to me about, maybe it's some of you, that we need to have better communication, so and when, I think Ken mentioned to me, when we were talking, that there was another bar or something that could be added for, or, you know
Well, yeah, I was like, there was power, there was power down values, and there's all sorts of menu options.
We got what we paid for.
I don't know, just finished.
Yeah.
Okay, well
But we have the format, the template, you know, you just need to, now get somebody in there to design it so it flows for business operations.
Other communities use that one call?
I beg your pardon?
They use one call, where they have everybody's phone number, and they send out a message. Town comes to a meeting tonight at seven o'clock.
That's a library.
You know, different messages. That's a notification system.
Yeah, I think that's what that
I don't know if the Go Gov, Go Gov thing is or not, I'm not sure.
That's an app.
That's an app.
It's a little different. But, I mean, maybe we can think about this when we're building our budget, to say, where can we put some money to add or to hire someone?
There was some money in the office aside, but the last update I saw it was
It was chatted a little bit, but we can always reallocate.
Would it do any good having James look into it?
No, I talked to him about it, and he said it was, you know, it was him, when he was tasked with it, to go to the departments, and nobody knew what to give him. So, that's not just all right, you know, he knew technology. Yeah, it was, technology's one thing, but business, well, another thing. It's a whole different deal.
He might have a recommendation for, but not that he could do, do it. I think that's the issue, he can't really do
He's not a designer.
No, he's not a designer.
What, what do we need for, is it an app to notify everyone via texting? I mean, that'll go to them, there's nothing, they have everything, there's nothing to complain about at that point.
Well, I think that's where I thought the Go Gov thing might have been, or might be, but I'm not sure.
It is, but you're saying it's expensive.
That's an app, an app, don't want to talk about it, no.
Well, but
But that connects to all the systems, so if you want to go online, you want to pay your bills and all that. But I talked to James, we don't own most of the systems that we collect money for, if I'm wrong.
Okay, well
So we don't own the building for that.
Why don't we own it? That's the state, I know.
Right. And our other system, we got to build them before the line, but I, I gave the impression it was pretty expensive to have that feature, for people to use their phone.
Yeah, okay, well, that answers, that answers
Why do we confirm it? I was gonna confirm, but you have to give your name and your nature, and then it comes, the phone calls, and the emails, the pressure to have a presentation, you have, if you want a presentation
Yeah, they'll probably come in here and
Tell us, show us how it works.
I doubt they'll come here, they'll probably put it up on board.
Whatever, same thing.
Put a feature in a day, and after that
They're convenience.
Well, if they want us, they can do it later. But Lynn also said there's another, there's a, there're probably a million different options out there.
I kept the messages from school.
Yeah. And what is it called?
Well, I've heard one call, it's one
One call?
I had talked to Stefan, we were gonna set that up.
Well, we have code, right, is that how, is that just
Emergencies. Emergencies, but, you know, it's sort of the same system or system life that schools use.
Yeah.
Where they notify, letting them early, you know.
Like, the technology's there, but, it's, once again, it's like now the business practice. The technology's there, who's gonna do it? Who's gonna put what out there? And how often do you do it, until you get people annoyed, till they lock in, you know? What's important? The ones that want it so bad, they'll have it. I don't think we can get any better than that, or even the time of the meeting, place of the meeting. That's one, one text, what's, what about the other during the week, or, or the updates, who's who's available by the page, who's available by the language, to say what's, you know, what's out there, you know, it gets complicated.
Well, can I just say that our agenda always says that each of these items are subject to review, consideration, discussion, and a possible action? So it sounds to me like we did the first several, we just haven't done any action tonight, that's all. So we did part of that, and I don't know, I, I'm not the ones that make the suggestion, I'm not, I'm not
I think we should look into the text vehicle. We can do it, find out?
Can you look into the one call?
One call, and all the other options?
Yeah.
Yeah, but even Lynn sends out, how many people are on your text? How many are on your email, for the agenda?
Oh, that's through the website. I don't know how many.
A lockdown, right?
Yeah. So everybody signed up to give a number, I don't see the numbers, maybe James could tell us.
So I don't know, maybe it could be a good program for the community center of, of government education. People don't know, they don't know what the charter does, what the charter is.
Yeah.
Well, look at what happened, when you mail out a flyer for the financial town meeting, how many people, that goes to everybody.
Right, but
Why you talk?
With the school district.
Well, I don't mean to prolong this, but, um
So is this gonna be unfinished business, or take it awful?
Put it on the budget agenda, I don't know.
That would work, but
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Budget agenda?
Yeah, just put it on the one we need. Okay, you ready for the next one? Okay, G, status, welcome signee, in and out of town. All right, so I, because I was waiting for some kind of application, my pre-application, I guess, now. Daniel, I got my letter, to verify that you support for project, and the county council, and it has to be signed, but you will not do this. And then also, Rob, you just gotta verify the installation process, that you're gonna meet the standards that they set.
Okay.
And if I'm assuming this
Okay.
And then, and the estimate cost, even though it's not gonna cost anything, they want to know the cost, it's just something, so I'll be, you know, I'll get you a letter, just signing.
So remind me, please, that the applicant, the app went to DOT, no? When did you
Yeah, and it goes to, then they, the army in general, they give it to the CMO.
Oh, CNI, okay. CNI, okay. And they need a letter that says that the council president supports
Right, then it's sufficient enough.
Okay. And then the letter might, does the letter also indicate that our own DPW staff will
No, it's a
Visit?
Install.
Install.
Yeah, the standards aren't yet to have certain holes drilled in the holes, so they can fall over. But they're all in the ten thousand page document of CNI's, I thought it
I just noticed in the town of Coventry, they've been going up all, all over the place, I noticed. I think I should look better than the ones I'm seeing in Coventry, but I don't think I, we're not gonna do all over the place, just
Well, the only thing off the mountain is that
The first one?
Challenge course, and how long it lasts.
Okay. Well, good. I, I did ask Lynn to put that on, because I didn't know where it went. And we can't go to Ken's report like we used to.
So should I carry it to unfinished business, or will you come back?
Well, I, I think you should, so that we, each month, we can find out whether there's been any progress, if we put it under unfinished business. Anybody object to that? Thanks.
Thanks, Ken.
Next up, H, planning process, six seventy-five Tenrod Road and seven forty-two Tenrod Road.
You got the first meeting?
We did.
We did, yeah.
We did.
We came out on Friday at one o'clock, and they gave us all of their specs, you know, what they had in their offices, the file cabinets, kind of a size, like ten by ten, when you step no, it is ten by ten. And then we were asked, you know, who would be willing to move, or could move. And the Board of Campus said they could move over there. And Social Services, and Dixie said that Bill, but we haven't talked to Bill, would not
Actually, I heard today, but I mean, then put up for you, but I called him about
Bill, the planning, would be willing to move also. But they would need, like, obviously phones, IT, which they would need anyway over there, locks on doors, and especially like
Some modifications, obviously have to be done.
And the center could be a community center for, you know, various programs to cover that grant. And they were, you know, interested in moving, like an internet slash community service type thing.
Yeah, if I, if, and Diane, if I could, let me, let me, just a little bit of an addition here. You know, we know office spaces have to be created, because there, what's there isn't I don't know, I haven't, I didn't look that carefully, I was only walking through it once. But I will tell you that I'm, I'm often at our planning board, an architect, that offered, I don't know, months ago, to say, he, he, well, or some months ago, when I said this was under consideration, he said he would be happy to walk through and look at it, and give us, I did not, not paying him, he was just, as an Exeter resident, with an eye for space, you know, redesign. So, I mean, I think we should pursue that. My question would be, when, when can we get in to look at it prior to that lease? You know, I know it's leased up to the end of June, to the end of June. Can we have any access to it at any point, or do you know?
That's the question. Your department, we got the cell phone, we're gonna get the date and time. I wouldn't want to leave it
Not open-ended, but I mean, uh, it's hard to talk about what we can do if we can't get in there to look at it. So, I guess I would ask if he's, if the owner, the prior owner is, is agreeable to setting up a time where, you know, a couple people, Bill would be happy. Well, I asked him today, because I was talking to him about con plan questions, and I said, by the way, I have one last question, and I asked him about, as we had discussed in, in the ball on Friday, um, would you, how do you feel about having a planning department that's separate and apart from the building, as in North Kingstown, for years? I don't know where planning is now, but for years it was on, on Brown Street, next to Wilson's, in the old library. He said, oh, just give me a tent, put me somewhere, well, I mean, what he means is, he needs to have a place to meet with people, and, uh, I just had this vision of that conference room there, I remember saying that people could make use of, so, that was his comment, but obviously, that's tongue-in-cheek, because nobody can go there until it's made ready, until it needs to be made ready, and then we have to have some people looking at it, so. It's a work in progress, I think.
You're gonna try to get the, the, the.
Yeah, this, this question came up last week, 'cause we're gonna need it in the budget process too. Can you get some kind of idea, I know our chart, ours are gonna be more, 'cause he's never in that building, for his monthly electric bill is, his monthly heating bill, so, it's, 'cause we're gonna have to throw that in the budget. While we're talking, 'cause he, he doesn't answer the phone for him, so.
Yeah, the project, the energy, the second project.
I just need a date, I want to, um.
Well, maybe, well.
The architect, Chris?
No, Mike, I'm the various. But I, but, but I think we need to know if he has any daytime, or, you know, late afternoon, or whatever, maybe a couple of.
Well, he'll be tomorrow night.
Well, one, one, I'm just guessing, I, I don't know if he'll be there or not, but, but, I, I think if we can get some opportunities to get in there, then we can coordinate, getting in, if he doesn't mind.
Well, I'll talk to him, maybe he'll just get the, at least the, you know, expensive camera system.
That's good, yeah, well, I don't wanna go in alone, I mean, I never should go in without, you know, 'cause then we don't want him to say we took some first. You know what I mean, it's a little.
Okay. You good there? Okay. Number ten, unfinished business, uh, A, status, July two thousand twenty-two, communication number sixteen, government, Rhode Island capital projects on multi-purpose community facilities matching, right?
Uh, I haven't heard anything, we're still waiting to make some appointments, um, we have to do a, a person and a phone appointment. I haven't heard anything positive or negative, as far as I know, we're still going to get it, but it was supposed to have been funded end of December, and it hasn't been funded yet, I don't think we still have a contact, so.
Okay, uh, B, status, update the town of Exeter, for the ordinance, chapter fourteen, buildings and building regulations, article nine, impact fees, uh, what do you got on that one here?
The only thing, the only thing I've, I was thinking about it, you know, Steve, Kelly and Bill had a discussion, and they have the, the solution that we talked about.
Go a step further, I guess we can ask Osprey tomorrow night. Okay. Alright, uh. Let's see, Director of Public Works, request your guidance, this is by Special Road, Special Drive.
Yeah, so, I think it's all clear for me to go in and remove that rock once I can, once I'm timing the schedule to do it. I wanna go in rush, I wanna do it right.
And there was the one, who'd you talk to, his daughter or him? Me and him had a discussion, the guy wanted the rocks put back on his lawn, and I told him, don't go on his property.
Right.
'Cause then we'll be accusing him of breaking something.
He wants to take the rocks back, so.
Right, so, um, once I get in my schedule, that was an obstacle, I was like, no, I want to give the guy his rocks back, 'cause, you know, even though he didn't listen to me in the first place, I don't have it the way I'm on it, but, you know. He wants to build a rock where his property, a rock wall where it is, where we pointed out, and it, I might, I wanna do it, but also, I don't wanna fucking get any liability thing. So, it's probably gonna be removed, I think it's easy.
Is this cemented in?
They are, yeah. So, but, you know, once.
Yeah.
Once you go to lift it, more than likely, it's gonna fall apart, he didn't, he didn't, like, trawl together.
Could you?
It's not a high-class job.
Destroy it, so to speak, and just leave it where it is neatly, and if he wanted to pick up the rocks out, no?
See, there's no need about that.
Okay.
You know, we're about beautifying, anything I do, I wanna make better than it is, but I think if I go in there and try to make a pile of stuff, it's just gonna make a mess.
Along with another part.
That's not how I wanna leave it, I wanna have a permit.
No, just temporarily, I was saying, just if he wanted his rocks so badly, he could take them.
He can take them out?
Okay.
No, we actually don't want him on, on property, removing that, and if he gets hurt doing that, like, it's like, that's another option. So, we don't want him to touch it, I believe, that's my.
Well, you come to the DPW, he gathers rocks.
You know, you always gotta take that way, in this day and age.
What else could it?
Well, I was gonna say.
You go to the DPW, grab the rocks when you after, if you really want them that bad, that he's still on the property.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
I wanted, I wanted the autonomy, when I got to the gentleman's letter, but, I mean, thinking it all the way through, just gonna remove it and.
What, uh, when you say remove it, you mean take all the rocks away?
It's coming out, yeah.
Instead of putting them in a pile on the corner of his property, which is that what he's, well, I mean, if that, yeah, I understand that, but if the letter's written to him, and says, says, we will place these on your property in a pile, if that's acceptable, then the answer is, no, I understand what you're saying, but if he's taking them away, when the man has said, I'd like these rocks, but, what?
It's too bad, they're not his rocks anymore, and he's, he's not a friendly guy.
That's fine.
He's not a friendly guy, obviously, so if we try to please him, we could, it could only backfire at this point.
No, I understand.
I'm being kind, I think when I'm saying that.
That's fine. I, I thought he was responsive to say, yes, just leave the rocks.
It's not my nature, just stop trying to, like, bring that out, about how good he is.
No, that's fine, okay. Well, leave it to, do what you think is, do you, what you think you should be doing, that's fine. Fine with me.
Okay, uh, I of D, propose modifications to planning department, that's gonna be budget?
Yeah, and we still haven't received any, um, recommendations from the planning board of what exactly they would like to see happen, or what Bill and Dixie, or Bill, needs.
Which I think, as Dad said, will do that, in the plan, in the budget planning.
Okay. 'Cause there, item E, proposed charter amendments, the level two thousand twenty-four election, in lock. Pretty much, it's just the conservation commission, wasn't it? And then the, um, what else? The one thing?
Yeah.
There were three.
There was the, yeah, the conservation commission reducing the number of people to five.
Person.
And then there was the purchasing piece, and. Well, that's good.
You said the three, you said three last one.
I thought that was three too.
I, I.
You could start on the two, the last one.
Here it is, I have a proposed charter, one, purchasing and accounting, and that's that one. Right now, I have to turn the page, but what's this? Oh, grant, the grant funds distribution. Grant funds, remember the issue of, I mean, the idea, what do we do with grants, monies that come in? So, that's two, and then the third one was the conservation commission.
Well, do they want?
Do we check state law that enables, you know, municipalities to form conservation commissions? Does it say, does it give a number of five or seven? 'Cause it might say seven, and we can't, reduce ours down to five, if the state says seven.
'Cause we usually copyright the state law.
So, so that makes a good, um, you make a good point, that, that may be where that came from, can we?
Just before we go and change it.
Yeah, can we check that state law?
Yeah.
On conservation commissions, good, so we'll leave that to you, you can report back to us about that, Ken.
Okay, we good on that one? Uh, I of M, status, RI two fifty commission, Exeter Historic Preservation Commission?
I went to the State House with Chris Bacon, I didn't go with them, but they were there too, Chris Bacon, Katrina Thornley, and Tressa Barner, and they had a kickoff on Friday.
In the library.
Yeah, in the library, yep, yeah, and it was just, it was basically, it was a, a nice little kickoff meeting, but we were expecting to get information of what was happening, like, what they, what they needed the towns to be doing, and they still, oh, stay tuned for the information, so, yeah.
Oh, but, go ahead.
But Chris and Katrina and Tressa are very excited about, um, getting Exeter involved in any ways that, uh, the, the commission, the two hundred and fiftieth commission, might need Exeter, uh, participation, and when they know what events and what, whatever, that they need to participate in, they'll ask for broader volunteers or whatever from the community, so.
And, wait, and also, this Saturday, right here at ten thirty, the meeting, um, those, those folks that Olivia just spoke to, are meeting here, and the public's invited to come and talk about things that the public might like to do, and participate in, and the Exeter Historical Association is, is, you know, discussing things that can be done unique to Exeter, so, there's discussion going on, but this is a public meeting here on, uh, the Saturday morning, ten thirty.
Okay, G, Department of Public Works, property damage, veil road, you have to give the letter to them?
Nope, I, I haven't yet, um, still waiting, believe it or not, for the police reply, it's not like an accident report, there's one department that does them for this damage, and so, they, she, it's this one woman, and I talked to her, yeah, email-wise, and she's gonna get it to me, however, it's ongoing, and, um, so I'm also arriving at, you know, in my mind, what I want done there, and it's probably, you know, cut out, replaced.
That's what I said, sorry.
So, um, there's gonna be legal, like, I'm not a lawyer or anything like that, so there's gonna be some kind of letters that are gonna have to go out to the contractor, the landowner, that have allowed that to happen, and they're real sneaky about it, they're going there way before hours, but this gouge is even worse than that, it's just getting worse.
Still doing it since?
Oh, absolutely.
It's gonna get terrible, 'cause that didn't even really start.
Even if they stop now, it, it's ruined, because the fractures that are all the way through that, this road is like one of the best ones we have.
Wow, so he's ignored everything?
Just total big, uh, you know, disrevive.
There's some big equipment going in there.
And it's like they're real sneaky about it, they're, they're in and out, they're sitting, I, you know, we got other residents that are watching it there.
How do we prove, how do we prove to them?
Well, I got pictures, I got pictures of them in the road, that, that incident alone, with that ninety thousand pound machine, did enough damage that I still would want that section cut out and removed, because it's, you know, not gonna break down this year, or maybe not even two years from now, but I guarantee, that's the spot that's gonna just be a mess, and potholes, it's, it's ruined already, but they're still doing it, um, and they're sneaky about it.
Maybe they know they're gonna replace it.
Well, they do, I, but I understand they're on an asphalt company now, so, you know.
The open highway.
That's the, that's the contractor that I have pictures of out there, that we did catch red-handed, and, you know, it's, I can't be there, and we're not, can't put cameras there, but it's other residents are letting us know.
Also, this road was fine.
It was better than fine.
This construction happens, and the road gets torn up.
The only thing that made it a nine out of ten is it wasn't brand new last year.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, but it's a nine out of ten, you know, so.
It's had a lot of work done recently.
It's really, really good road, so, and that's what we should, I want, that there, 'cause next thing, oh, he's helping fixing it, and spending money on fixing something, instead of just maintaining it, preventing, you know.
Okay, alright, stay right there, uh, request of Exeter Historical Association, Hall School Security Desk, the floor.
You weren't here, your coworker was here that day.
Yep.
You were in Florida.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna screw those.
I think we got it fixed, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we, we was.
You're gonna use appropriate-sized screws to screw the desks to the floor.
Not great big bolts, but.
I told Sheila, I was going all the way through the floor, and that dirt floor below, so.
So, the plates, I mean, the plates, if they're not going all the way through, I mean, this, I think there's eight, there's four per foot on those desks, that, that's, you know, so there's sixteen per desk, there's a lot.
I don't think it'd involve, don't you think it would?
Well, then if it falls over that, we didn't have the proper mounting there, you know, it's not all the way through the floor, it's not a through bolt situation, where you got a bolt on the other side of the board, so.
It's just a screw.
Okay, you're right, though, liability, if someone were to get hurt, we didn't have the proper amount of screws in for the desk.
You know what I mean, so, it's, it's, just trying to look at it from all angles.
If you do, if you don't, so.
Right, right.
It, it, it's the chairs that had the round bases that you could, you could make, make up to the desk, not so big, but, secure those.
If that's the direction that I'm told to go in, it'll get done.
Yeah. I, I would remove this item.
Okay, I'm on Florida, see what you missed.
I, I would suggest we remove this item from the agenda.
I was just gonna say that, 'cause I was looking at the.
Consider it done, it's on schedule.
Thank you, we're gonna re, we need a vote to remove that, all favor I, communications.
Uh, and, well, wait, you skipped the go, uh, are we gonna do anything with Go Government mobile app, or just can we leave it?
Well, I think the yellow one there, uh, there was, uh.
Well, you wanna take it off, is that, that's the idea?
The bulk of the service is not so much. Increase community notification and awareness, it would be covered under that.
Yeah. But that is nice, but that's not.
Well, let's remove it, uh, remove the, we remove it from the agenda.
Okay, communications, county number six.
Yeah. Uh, I was gonna ask Ken about this, uh, and Timon and I, I think I've told the folks before, I, I'm not a big fan of resolutions, because I, I think they pile up on somebody's desk there, but, at the same time, we've got one here from the town of Timon, that wants, uh, full funding of, um, state aid to libraries, but they say that the governors, if you read it, the governor's proposed budget funds state aid to twenty-four point eighteen percent in twenty, instead of twenty-five percent, I know Ken sits on the state board, I, I don't know, Ken, do you have any thoughts about that?
They lost twenty-five percent, and it didn't matter, that was in the state law, as you could see, what they specified in there, that, was that the years, or was that twenty percent, twenty?
Was that, oh, was it, it's been for years, it's been lower than twenty-five?
Yes.
Even though state statute says it's to be twenty-five. So, gets Ken's point, as we need to say, that they should adhere to state statute, which is twenty-five percent.
Which they did this year.
They did this year. Oh, first time, twenty-five percent, a long time now, these points have reduced to twenty-four point eighteen.
Well, it does not, this would not affect, uh, the question.
It won't, doesn't?
Oh.
Well, it didn't seem like it, so that's, so I, I didn't know if it was worth us considering any action or not, I would say probably isn't worth any action on that, but.
What do you think, Ken?
He said it wouldn't affect us, so.
No, but you don't, you wanna make sure that they're aware, everybody else is aware.
Yeah, that we see what they're doing.
Yeah, and I, and I like that, that inter-community, you know, whatever, support, kind of intra, whatever, support.
Community dollars.
Well, then, then, I, I would ask, I would ask that this item, this resolution be added to new business, uh, for. for next month's agenda, and that it be Exeterized, so that we might consider adopting this, a resolution of the same kind. That would be my motion.
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, Cal, you had number seven, Cal Warren, that motion on?
I, I did.
What is eight, seven, eight, nine, three, is it similar to this one?
Well, no. This, what, what this, and I, again, I'm not familiar with that particular bill. However, what it indicates here is that the proposal would create an Office of State Building Commissioner, and the next paragraph of this resolution indicates that the act confers upon a building commissioner the duty to enforce all laws of the state, including but not limiting to conducting and supervising building code inspections of all residential and commercial buildings regulated by the code within the state, et cetera. And the, the statement next is that this act will expropriate local oversight of building code matters from towns and cities. In other words, I read this, it's taking responsibility for enforcing building codes to be put on a state building commissioner. And then it says each city and town is unique, has its own intricacies, assigning control over local building decisions will lead to loss of the unique character of each city and town in Rhode Island. And then the Warren Town Council opposes that, that proposal.
To me, it just looked like they're trying to take over, the state is again trying to take over the local...
Well, that's the way I read it.
Yeah.
And which is, oh, oh, you did, you did say that, yeah. So, you know, again, to support Warren, I would, I would support this resolution, and, and for the reasons Diane just indicated.
Yeah, it looks like you serve our home zone.
It's a step-by-step process. So, I, I would move that we place this resolution on next month's new business, and ask that it be Exeterized, so that we might consider it production next month.
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
Then, number 15, Cal, the only one I got a question on, eight, three, G, and I don't have the legislation in front of me. Resolution opposing House Bill 7980, legislation relating to motor and other vehicles, mobile and manufactured homes. I think that's the one Joe that we're putting in there to count trailers as affordable housing? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I...
Why they would be opposing it?
Well, I, I didn't either, and I didn't, I didn't bring it forward to automatically say, let's do it. I just thought that maybe there might be some of these pieces.
Well, you know what strikes me about that bill, G?
Yeah.
When Frank Warren was in the State Senate, he put a bill in every year to count trailers as affordable housing, and they threw it in the trash. And now that bill has Joe Secarchi's name on it, the greatest thing since sliced bread.
Well, because we know why that is.
They kept a copy, they didn't throw it all in the trash. Yeah, they, they kept one copy, yeah. In one year, I was up there with the pilot legislation, and Senator Morgan had put that bill in it, but it was in the same year we were in, they threw that one away, so. That one, we'd have to do some research on, so. It strikes me as odd, why would they be opposed to it? Because it's helping you get to the affordable number.
I, I didn't know whether others had concerns about this, but I didn't...
I read most of these like a month, month and a half ago, I can't remember more than one.
Well, I thought you probably had, and that's why I wanted to engage you a bit. But I don't have any intention at this point of making any recommendations on it. If anybody else wants to, or you want to, we can activate, or whatever, okay?
Okay. Diane had four, then sixteen.
They're basically the same thing. And years ago, I was on, with a full group of people, and we fought this stupid thing when Obama was on. And it was to put in a high-speed, costing billions of dollars, put in a high-speed train from Boston to Washington. And in the end, it saved six or eight minutes, I can't remember. That was all it saved, because it had to go underground, and the windows would blow out if you went 70 miles an hour, 80 miles an hour, or something like that. And they brought, it was going through Indian land, it was going through that...
The Colter Farm?
Where we had, the Colter Farm, which is the oldest farm in the entire country, was gonna split their farm in half. And it was also going where they had the nuclear plant that was gonna, and there was nuclear waste. It was in Charleston.
That's not a big...
So, he's turning green, showing from there. And Old Saybrook, they were doing terrible things in Old Saybrook, and they brought it back. We got rid of it. And so, I would like also to have a resolution supporting, you know, the addition to this stupid railroad. And this is just in our little area, what it was doing in Rhode Island, and into Old Saybrook, and it was just messing up the way of Saybrook, too. So, we had Connecticut helping us with it. But, yeah, it's a terrible idea, costing billions of dollars. If they want to do something, just fix some of the tracks. It's good, I, I'm going there.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's...
Second?
Motion to move it down?
For, to put this on the next town, the resolution for the next town.
Remain, remain, maybe.
Remain.
Yeah, motion for second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Number two. Number 22, correspondence, number 22, I want to take that correspondence and refer that to executive session for the mayday. And that's it.
Okay.
Okay, we assess before we go to executive session? Okay, we're in executive session, of course. We're gonna take a point to go to executive session, item number A, relying general law 22-46-5A to executive party number one, memorandum of agreement modification.
Second?
Second.